About Whitney, real quick. Board, thank you for the opportunity for us to come together again and do the school district. If you would please guide our thoughts and our words and our actions to the living of the district and to your glory in Jesus' name we pray, amen. If you would face the America flag for me, join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag, can you write?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
We don't have anybody sign up to speak, maybe we should get last one on the board. Any students want to speak, Brown? You guys are here to watch? Ross, right, yeah. You want to speak? Have you spoke before? Have you been given? Do you have a quick little?
No, it's just, you want me to go over?
Real quick.
Okay, you have five minutes. If you were wanting to address any personnel or any names in this, that's out of line. You're not going to do that here. He'll call you down on that. But other than that, you have five minutes and the board will not respond or answer questions or ask questions.
Well, let me just give you a copy of what I'm gonna read and then you can do that real quick before I start.
Take out any names, because there's names in here. Names have to be removed. You can't name people individually. The content is signed. You can read the content. You can't read the names. You can't address individual teachers. You can't address individual administrators. You know what I'm saying?
That's the whole point with whatever.
That's the rules.
That's fine, whatever your rules.
But you can read.
Well, I'll go through there and I'll be back that real quick.
That's what I'm saying, just.
I'll speak last, because why this is first? Let me see if you can ask me that.
But you can read the content, you just can't address the individual teacher by name.
Alright, thanks.
Do you want to give him just a minute? Do you want to give him just a minute to do that?
Uh, that'd be fine. Okay. Now, the other part, you know, you say names, that's one thing, but he can't say high school principals.
Oh, right. You can't name them by position either. You can't say the principal, you can't say the band director, you can't say the athletic director, football coach either. You can't address them individually like that either. But the content is signed otherwise. And we'll give you just a couple of minutes to prepare.
Now, the board can respond if there's false information, I'll put it that way.
Danny is, what did you say? Is home. Danny, now it is quarter. Yes, we got that. Conrad. We got Conrad. That's my actual brother. I got it.
You made the box. I mean, like, built it for me. Holy, what a kid.
That's cute.
Dr. Mortensen, right?
Yeah.
I probably should.
No, I actually don't. I just wanted to.
When is Randy the same?
He was, of course, when I'm walking by.
The rest of these pictures. So.
Well, you know what? I was enjoying it. I don't know.
I'm done.
I know a friend went out of town and was trying to get back in last night or yesterday, and the storm was so bad that they couldn't even take it. They had to just pull over and park.
Yes, it's Carter.
I see Coach Shaw came back.
Yeah, he's back.
Morpheus.
I thought he might have taken his spring break, said, well, I'm done. Just, I got that.
Hmm? You got five minutes? I'll check for something. Did it work?
You can't get off Facebook on the school.
No. It's all Facebook. Yeah, Facebook is. Yeah, I put it on the parking lot, bring it right here.
I'm saying parking lot, I had to take off school so I could get on.
Because soon as I pull up, I sit at the parking lot, can't pick my kid up, I'm like, crap, turn off the wifi.
Yeah, turn that wifi off, I don't want to be on Facebook.
I think you ought to get off the Facebook.
What's happening today, why are you waiting for your kids to come out? It's annoying because they don't want to.
I got you this clean.
Are you ready?
Well, that taking out the names is.
I know, that's why I think.
Well, when the president gets up to speak, he just off the top of his head, you know, then every few minutes he picks his foot in the mouth. I can do that. So if y'all stop me, it's okay.
Now, when you start talking, I'll start a timer. You've got five minutes.
Okay. My name is Robert Woods. My son is Robbie Woods Jr. He's the Sabine drum major of the band. I've been making complaints over an issue with Robbie since May of 2016. Robbie is the victim of a parental adulation scheme. If anybody know what parental adulation is? That's the, that's when one parent in a divorce, you know, gets the child to respond to an unoriented fear or disrespect of the other parent by psychological manipulation. And the largest group of child abuse in the state of Texas, in every state, is the co-parent in your divorce, after your divorce. I have actually initiated a new law. Because of this, I'm hopefully going to have it presented to the Gray County next Saturday at the Gray County GOP convention for our area. Gosh, taking all the names out of this messed up my presentation. Well, the complaint started, like I said, way back. It's a scheme where my son goes out on the football field as drum major, he announces Robbie Belt, if that's not his name. And Mr. Bryce knows and everybody, all members of the board, you've seen all my emails and you saw it certified now, but I can't read really, because every second says it's somebody's name. Since I sent the complaint that I brought up here on 9/11/17, since then I've been retaliated against by the board, by Sabine, and that's not even allowed in TDA regulations. You can't retaliate against a parent for making a complaint, but that's precisely what's happened to me. They blocked my email, and I had to send from another email address, and they totally ignored all my requests to try to change the situation where a teacher is joining, actually there are two teachers involved that I can't name, but they're promoting a parental adulation scheme to the school and students. One teacher has stood up on the stage and announced my son with a different name because he is the key component to this conspiracy to poison my son's mind against me. It's, I don't know how to build over this without you.
What time, what's your time?
You about two and a half. Okay. Well, since I really can't go through my presentation like I was planning, maybe I can just tell people, make them look it up for themselves. I'm trying to, this is my Twitter, I'm gonna leave this here, if anybody wants to look at it. I'm on Twitter as the originator of the Robbie sake, preventing parental adulation by proposing a penalty under Texas law for poisoning the child's mind against his parents. Exactly my issue. Since the school doesn't help me, and I've filed multiple felony charges, including, to Mr. Bryce, can I say that? Your name and my name. I'm sorry. Including people at the school, I have filed felony charges. And we found out through J Dean's chief of staff in Austin, Mitch Uger, where's his name is, Caden guy, very United States, Caden. And he called up and tried out what happened to all the charges, and they, the sheriff, never turned him on, the DA, and we found out just in the election that was on the radio, there's a big conflict between the DA and sheriff. So I'm submitting all those felony charges again, all the misdemeanors. Not only am I on Twitter, everybody can follow me on that, this is my Facebook page. This is Robert. He was at the East Texas Symphony Band concert the other day. He still doesn't speak to me, I have his phone number now, I can send him texts, but he has been alienated from me since he's eleven years old. He's seventeen, I'm fixing to be eighteen next month. And while passing in stands during football games, he won't speak to me, he wouldn't speak to me after the concert. What has happened is he's the victim of this hoax, I call it the Sabine hoax, and you can still see it on somebody's Facebook page. And what it is, it's just a huge fake history that was fabricated out of thin air to poison his mind against his dad, so you can guess who wrote it. And two teachers have been promoted to the school.
Fifteen seconds.
And that is the issue, the Sabine hoax. I sent the certified mail that I really can't read, giving them a last opportunity before we do something else to stop the hoax. My son is abused every day at the hands of Sabine schools.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to information items. I guess we'll go first with Mr. Shaw, because I know, well, let's go the other way.
You can put him first. He has. Everybody here will feel better.
Best bands, anything y'all want to report from the community? Spring break is over?
Yes, it is, officially.
Mr. Reeves, I know you have something to report.
Yes, well, one thing I just want to highlight tonight is we do have several kids that have been competing all year long in team MCA, which is our math and science competitions that they do. And we have had eight of those kids that have qualified for state, which is in April, and so they'll be going down to San Antonio to compete at the state level. As far as I can remember, I think that's our biggest number we've had qualify since I've been here. We haven't had a meeting since our UIL thing, I don't think either. And so with UIL, we had UIL like before spring break for the middle school over at Cumberland Academy in Tyler, and we swept that pretty easily at all three grade levels and as a whole. We had over a thousand, I think a thousand seventy-eight points total. Was the last number I saw, but there were still some tallies coming in, and second place, which was Harmony, was in the seven hundred range, and so we won that pretty easily. Our kids went over and competed well in every event. Some of them we swept, some of them, you know, we placed here and there, and we won several team first and second place medals as well. And so we had a good competition, good UIL season this year, and some of those kids are still going with the TMSCA.
And he won Trump, that was his TMSCA. He's about to have, but we won't get into that this year. We did win District UIL, so I get to tell them.
I sent the results to the board members before, so it's good to hear you talk about that. But the TSMCA is the math, science.
Coaches Association.
Yeah, organization that actually, Coach Shaw will do this a little bit, but it's a step above and beyond UIL, which speaks highly for our kids at the middle school. Eight gives, of course, by far the largest number that we've had make it to state in middle school, and that's.
And they did this year achieve some goals that were set that they'd never achieved before. I think that goal was like twenty-five hundred points as a team that they kind of put out there. They'd been cheating around the two thousand point mark, and they blew that out of the water the first week. They put that on the table as a challenge, so they did really good in that. And for the first time ever, we had a kid so close in science, and he's a sixth grader, so we feel really good about him over the next couple of years as far as getting a science kid qualified, because right now it's all math and calculator and number sense, but we have some science kids coming along that are really pushing it and getting very close. If he had started with our very first meet, he probably would have qualified before it was over with.
And that was our goal.
So these kids are getting up on Saturday mornings to go to these meets. These are all, this is in school like UIL is, this is getting up on Saturday mornings to go, so.
And that was our goal this year, is to, you know, last year at the high school level, we were that close in winning the overall state championship in academic. So we thought, okay, we're going to start lower, lower level pushing, and that's what we have coming. So we've had a lot of kids going to the high school early morning or late afternoon to meet with that group at the high school that works with the math, science, so it's really worked well. Anyway, Coach Shaw.
Of course, I'm not here to debate. But I will go over a few things that I'm very proud of, the kids over at the high school. First thing we'll talk about is the same thing that he did, they went to San Antone this past Saturday. We actually met up at Mo's Pizza Parking Lot and had a little send-off for them and our young lady that I'll discuss in a little bit, that was empowered and going to state. So it was a good turnout, and we got started in the right direction, and as I well expected, they went to San Antone and they turned a lot of people's eyes on their performance. We had twenty-three kids to go, we brought back twenty-four state trophies. Seven state champions, six second place, five third place, and fourth, fifth, and sixth, we had a total of six. So twenty-four trophies from twenty-three kids, seven state champions in those math and science events. We won state in number sense, calculator, and math, and we were third in science. Our total of points down in San Antone was two thousand nine hundred and ninety-four points. The closest school to us was nineteen oh-two. So as I was visiting with Coach Taylor today, he said he could have taken out the, one of, any of the three and still would have had more points than second place team. So a great showing, and as Mr. Bryce alluded to earlier, this is a step above UIL. So we're very excited about that, which we will have our UIL district meet this Wednesday, day after tomorrow, here. And, you know, I know I'm not overconfident, but I feel that we will do extremely well, and we'll have many kids going on to regional, and then from there, going on to state. So a great job by our math, science team. Thank you, thank Mr. Bryce for providing the money for us to travel down there and do some things with those kids. These individuals, I don't have enough things to say about, they get up early in the morning, come and practice, they stay after school, walk around up here at six o'clock waiting for Will to get out of basketball, they'll still be in Coach Taylor's room practicing, and they compete against each other, which makes them that much better. I mean, they're, you know, it's not, if we go back and look at the meets we've gone to, we've had different winners all year long, and that's what makes the team so strong, is they compete, but they compete to make each other better. We also had our one act play, competed the district competition on March eighth in ARP. They were one of the three schools that advanced. We go to Bay District this Friday at four at ARP. We had All-Star cast, Taylor Garlo. If you haven't had an opportunity to see the one act play, again, they'll be at ARP competing at four o'clock on Friday. The Cross X team, that's the first UIL event we had, we had that back in February. We swept it, one through fourth places. We had two teams that, the top two teams went to state, and our second place team went two and two in competition the first day at state, did not make it to the second day. The first place team went four and oh, and out of the thirty-seven, or sixty-four teams in three A, we finished sixth. So a great showing from the Cross X team, which gives us points for state that we will hopefully add to whenever the rest of the UIL team goes down to Austin.
Debate, cross-examination, people are like, what is this, Cross X? So debate.
Okay, this Cross X debate, yeah, and that's, yeah, like I started out with, we're going to debate a little bit. But anyway, that's, that is, that's in February, and the reason they do that, because it takes so long to get that through, because like you say, you've got sixty-four teams in state, it takes two complete days for them to go through and compete against one another. So anyway, congratulations, the two that were in Austin, that finished in sixth place was Jackson Lutz and Adriana Salgado. Powerlifting, mentioned that earlier, we had a young lady that qualified for state, she finished eleventh last Saturday. We have a young man going this Saturday to Abilene, BJ Stidham. BJ was the region three division champion in the one hundred and twenty-three weight class. He won by two hundred and five pounds over second place. He was also the top overall lifter at the regional meet for the lower weight classes.
That's the part, he weighs a hundred and twenty-three pounds. He's a powerlifter.
And he has a good chance to win the state championship, so real proud of him. Erica Lowry was a young lady, both of those are being interviewed by Channel Seven at the present time, so they'll probably be on TV in the morning and tomorrow afternoon. Erica was, she was interviewed last week on KTK, I believe, was the station that interviewed her, real good interview from her. But a great season for powerlifting, they had several kids that were regional qualifiers, and then they had two, one boy, one girl, that went on to state. FFA has been very busy going to the Houston Livestock Show. We've had kids that have had entries in livestock, chickens, turkeys, sheep, hogs, and heifers. We also had one, Brady Barra, who presented a dissertation on natural resources down there and did extremely well, because if you know Brady Barra, you know that he's going to do everything, and he's going to do well at it. Emily Crutcher competed in the dairy judging contest, and she brought back eighth individual medal from the junior division. The next competition she will compete as, on the senior team in Supper Springs. Our projects that we took, we had blue ribbons in the four that they took down there. Projects were, their level of quality and craftsmanship was both given good marks. And then during spring break, Caden Perry competed in the ultimate scramble championship at rodeo Austin, making it through the first two rounds before competing in the finals. He fell just short of the five thousand scramble certificate, but will receive over a thousand to invest in a future livestock project. So good showing by our kids in all different areas. ARP group is going to Kilgore, the Kilgo, I think it's Kilgo, this weekend. They have some good projects that they will be taking up there, and I'm sure that they will be winning some places at that this weekend. And remember, we have UIL district meet here Wednesday, you're welcome to come up, and any sport that you want to know about, we're playing this week. We've got, we've got baseball, softball, track tomorrow here, we've got.
Tennis is Tuesday and Thursday.
Tennis, Tuesday and Thursday.
Golf play today.
Golf play today, and then we've got another track meet for the high school, middle schools tomorrow, high school track meet Thursday.
And both of those track meets are here.
All that's here.
And then don't forget, UIL one act play is four o'clock Friday at ARP, you can go to it. And I know there's something happening Saturday besides ARP, but.
Car show.
Car show, yeah, for the band, so.
And baseball.
Make sure, don't bring your car, I'm in first place. Any questions for me? Just, you know, like I say, I'm blessed, all I can say, I've got great kids, and they perform at the highest level, and they put in the time that's needed, that's the thing. They put in the time, and when they compete, they win because of the practice and the many hours they put in to prepare to compete.
Who was the little girl that beat Tee? I can't think of her name.
Oh, and you think?
Our school?
Yeah, she wasn't supposed to beat him, but she beat him.
Yeah, that was, that was, that was, that following Monday, I think Tee was here until about ten o'clock, because he didn't let it happen again. I can't think right offhand who it is.
Well, that's, that's the thing, is what he's saying is they're competing against each other. It's not us against them, it's the three or four of them all competing against each other.
It's the competition.
That raises them up to the level they are. I mean, we're a thousand points from second place, it's not even against the other schools anymore. It's just between them, who gets first, second, and third. But it's pretty impressive.
All right, moving on to consent items. Anything we need to pull out? I'm sorry, we do accounts payable, I'm sorry, we have so much excess, I forgot. Accounts payable. Anything? Is there anybody, did any discussion of anything of the accounts payable? Is what it is? Easy enough. Now they will move to consent items. Anything we need to pull out of consent items? Our normal practice is to approve those of the group. If I can get a motion to approve consent items. Patty, we got a second from Paul. Any discussion? All in favor? In unanimous? All right, discussion items, read to the board chair. Okay, the only thing on discussion, or a couple of things, but the first thing is, at this point of the year, this time of the year, is when we normally look at the region seven board chair election information, and as you can see in your packet that I sent to you, they will not have an election because no one is running against incumbents, so that board will stay intact at region seven, and I just need to let y'all know that, so I have to let y'all know, it would not, it wouldn't be necessary to take a vote on that this year, so. All right, so the next item is. Okay, the next item is softball field update. We've received the ARP queues from ARP techs, and now another area we're looking at is looking at different companies, getting quotes from them, but also looking at the design-build method, whether that's going to be better for us on design-build, or go ahead and get the architect and get the drawings on that, and then go from there, go that route. The difference with the design-build is when you, you can go out and hire a company to, that you choose to do the field. And.
Competition on March eighth in ARC. They were one of the three schools that advanced. We go to by district this Friday at four at ARC. We had all-star cast Taylor Garlo. If you haven't had an opportunity to see the One Act play, again, they'll be at ARC competing at four o'clock on Friday. The cross X team, that's the first UIL event we had. We had that back in February. We swept it, one through fourth places. We had two teams that, the top two teams went to state. And our second place team went two and two in competition the first day at state, did not make it to the second day. The first place team went four and O. And out of the thirty-seven, or sixty-four teams in three A, we finished sixth. So a great showing from the cross X team, which gives us points for state that we will hopefully add to whenever the rest of the UIL team goes into Austin.
Debate, cross examination, people like, what is this cross X? So debate.
Okay, this cross X debate, yeah, that's, like I started out with. We're going to debate a little bit. But anyway, that's, that is, that's in February. And the reason they do that, because it takes so long to get that through. Because like you say, you've got sixty-four teams in state. It takes two complete days for them to go through and compete against one another. So anyway, congratulations, the two that were in Austin that finished in sixth place was Jackson Lutz and Adriana Salgado. Powerlifting, mentioned that earlier. We had a young lady that qualified for state. She finished eleventh last Saturday. We have a young man going this Saturday to Abilene, BJ Stidham. BJ was the region three division champion in the one hundred and twenty-three weight class. He won by two hundred and five pounds over second place. He was also the top overall lifter at the regional meet for the lower weight classes.
He weighs a hundred and twenty-three pounds. He's a powerlifter.
And he has a good chance to, to win the state championship. So real proud of him. Erica Lowery was a young lady. Both of those are being interviewed by Channel Seven at the present time. So they'll probably be on TV in the morning and tomorrow afternoon. Erica was in, she was interviewed last week on KTK, I believe, was the station that interviewed her. Real good interview from her. But a great season for powerlifting. They had several kids that were regional qualifiers. And then they had two, one boy, one girl, that went on to state. FFA has been very busy going to the Houston Livestock Show. We've had kids that have had entries in livestock, chickens, turkeys, sheep, hogs, and heifers. We also had one, Brady Barra, who presented a dissertation on natural resources down there and did extremely well. Because if you know Brady Barra, you know that he's going to do everything and he's going to do well at it. Emily Crutcher competed in the dairy judging contest and she brought back eighth individual medal from the junior, junior division. The next competition she will compete as, on the senior team in Supper Springs. Our projects that we took, we had blue ribbons in the four that they took down there. Projects were, their level of quality and craftsmanship was both given good marks. And then during spring break, Kayden Perry competed in the ultimate scramble championship at rodeo Austin, making it through the first two rounds before competing in the finals. He fell just short of the five thousand scramble certificate, but will receive over a thousand to invest in a future livestock project. So good showing by our kids in all different areas. ARC group is going to Kilgore, the Kil, Kilgo, I think it's Kilgo, this weekend. They have some good projects that they will be taking up there. And I'm sure that they will be winning some places at that this weekend. And remember, we have UIL district meet here Wednesday. You're welcome to come up. And any sport that you want to know about, we're playing this week. We've got, we've got baseball, softball, track tomorrow here. We've got.
Tennis is Tuesday and Thursday.
Tennis Tuesday and Thursday.
Golf play today.
Golf play today. And then we've got another track meet for the high school, middle schools tomorrow. High school track meet starts right.
And both of those track meets are here.
All that's here.
And then don't forget, UIL One Act Play is four o'clock Friday at ARC. You can go to it. And I know there's something happening Saturday besides ARC, but.
Car show.
Car show, yeah, for the band. So.
And baseball.
Make sure, not bring your car, I mean, first place. Any questions for me? Just, you know, like I say, I'm blessed. All I can say, I've got great kids and they perform at the highest level. And they put in the time that's needed. That's the thing. They put in the time and when they compete, they win because of the practice and the many hours they put in to, to prepare to compete.
Who was the little girl that beat T? I can't think of her name.
Oh, who you think?
Our school.
Yeah, she wasn't supposed to beat him, but she beat him.
Yeah, that was, that was, that was, that following Monday, I think T was, was here until about ten o'clock, because he didn't let it happen again. I can't think right offhand who it is.
Well, that's, that's the thing is, what he's saying is they're competing against each other. It's not us against them. It's the three or four of them competing against each other.
It's the competition.
That raises them up to the level they are. I mean, we're a thousand points from second place. It's not even against the other schools anymore. It's just between them, who gets first, second, and third. But it's pretty impressive. All right, moving on to consent items. Anything we need to pull out? I'm sorry, we do accounts payable. I'm sorry, we have so much excess, I forgot. Accounts payable. Anything? Is there anybody, did any discussion of anything of the accounts payable? Is what it is? Easy enough. Now they will whip the consent items. Anything we need to pull out of consent items? Our normal practice is to approve those as a group. If I can get a motion to approve consent items. And Patty, we got a second from Hall. Any discussion? All in favor? Ananamous? All right, discussion items, Region seven board chair.
Okay, the only thing on discussion, or a couple of things, look, the first thing is, at this point of the year, this time of the year, is when we normally look at the Region seven board chair election information. And as you can see in your packet that I sent to you, they will not have an election because no one is running against incumbents. So that board will stay intact at Region seven. And I just need to let y'all know that. So to let y'all know, we would not, it wouldn't be necessary to take a vote on that this year.
All right, so the next item is.
Okay, the next item is softball field update. We, we received the ARC cues from architex. And now another area we're looking at is looking at different companies, getting quotes from them, but also looking at the design build method, whether that's going to be better for us on design build, or go ahead and get the architect and get the drawings on that and then go from there, go that route. The difference with the design build is when you, you can go out and hire a company to, that you choose to do the field, and then they in turn kind of hire out the architect. Normally they'll have one that they work with. They'll hire out the electrical engineer. They'll hire out even the geotech work that has to be done, those type of things. So we're nearing the point now where we're going to be able to see which route is going to be better for us in that respect. So probably we may, I'll get with Tony, but we may need to call a special board meeting, so to speak, so that we can go ahead and get that done in the near future, so we don't have to wait a month for that before we get rolling again. We looked at the water situation out there with the, with the geotech guy, and they're on top of that. And the other side of it is Dr. Mortch and I talked about the water company. If, if the geotech guy finds out that it's something from a line, then that's where we go with water company. But anyway, all of that's moving forward very well. And I really hate to wait to another regular board meeting before we go ahead and make a move on the next step, if y'all agree with that. I'll just have to let y'all know when that, when that might be.
How do we decide, okay, so on a design build, I want to see, will we get a competitive angle on that as far as pricing does?
A lot of, you're exactly right, a lot of times.
We lose competition that way.
I would see that.
A lot of times that is not the case.
It seems like, in my mind, we pick an architect and come up with set plans or some variables, and we would decide which variable we liked, and then we would send that out to competitive field.
The only difference is, if you have these companies that basically that's all they do and they can streamline it, they can give you competitive price. But you know too, all of those companies are going to be, you know, the metaclear area. So that's what we're looking at now.
From a company that does cookie cutter and softball field.
So, I mean, it does make sense in the fact that you could look at two or three of them. It would be, I guess, now I'm thinking about, like, getting a swimming pool built would probably be a good example. You'd have someone come out, they would actually do the design and the construction of the pool.
Correct, yeah. And, and they, they can basically do whatever you want them to do, or as little as you want them to do. But yet they will have their architect that they always use, you know, and their electrical engineers that they always use. Yeah. So, yeah, it just depends. Sometimes you can save some money on that. But we want quality, whoever builds it, you know, it's going to be quality, period. They will have experience, but it's a matter of can we do it more economically, more economically to our advantage by doing the architect route or the construction, I mean, the design deal.
What I can see, basically, baseball fields are fairly simple. I mean, they're pretty repetitive.
One of the cookie cutter issues is where you put that.
The only design difference is the topographic difference.
Where you're putting them.
Right. And you know, we've, we've talked about.
Your stands and your bathrooms and concession.
Well, certainly, but they can give you a schedule.
Small, medium, large.
True. And that's one thing where, that's in all of the discussion is, is not just the field, you know, it's dugouts, it's concession stand, it's restaurants, and one other factor that you, yeah, the lighting. One other factor that we don't want to omit is, okay, we also need backing tunnels built at the same time.
We need what?
Backing tunnels built at the same time. So that's something we can't leave out. So that, all of that, saying all of that equals a lot of cement, of course. So want to make sure we don't leave anything out while we're doing it. And as I was discussing with Tony earlier, you know, I want to, I'm going to bring to y'all, you know, artificial turf prices, natural grass prices, you know. So it'll be, y'all can look at all of that, compare it and see which route you want to go with. A lot of that, of course, we have to do with the price tag.
Well, it has to do with maintenance, and that's where we are.
I assume we can be ready to, can we have a meeting next week, or we?
If not next week, early next, but I hope by next week. You know, we'll still have to close it and everything. And, but I feel like next week we can do that. Now, bringing to you guys a company, you know, is not going to be next week on, you know, looking at which company you want to use. That's a lot of information to bring to you, but I'll give that to you ahead of time so you have a look at it.
Got a question I hadn't thought of until right now. If you go to the Little League Park, they have single entrance, they can charge admission. Football field, charge admission. Our baseball field, we could charge admission if we wanted to.
And you know, most schools don't.
Are we, for future reference, are we even considering putting it in a position where there's a single entrance, single, like a football field, where you walk in a gate, or is it just wide open, you have a baseball field?
Well, in a three A school district, you know, I know y'all can already see, it's, it's not a big moneymaker.
Oh, no, 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 it's not going to make money.
And the, the money you're going to spend on.
Funnel everything to the one.
And all that is way more than what you're going to get in any ticket sale.
So it will be wide open, right? Baseball field, you just walk in. Yeah, like I said, it was, it popped in my head while you were talking.
One time that you would even charge is if you had like a special tournament.
Well, that's what I wondered, if other schools came here for tournaments, if we could, if we had it set up to where we could.
Wish you could always make you use the Little League for something like that, where you could inhabit a gated entrance.
Control exits for injury purposes.
Well, I'm saying, baseball field is a lot of, you can come to any direction. Anyway, anybody else got anything? All right, move on to our action items. Transfer criteria for next year.
Okay, if you will look at that information, oh, here's, there's, there's a bit of wording that I would like to change on that. Tracy and I.
This is the approved version.
Tracy and I have silver.
This is newer than what's in there. Line number seven is modified.
In our communications back and forth by texting and emails, there was one part of this on the packet that, that I did not want in there. And this is, the one I just handed out is what I would like to see as new. Number seven, on our payment guidelines, what, what is happening is that when we accept transfers, you know, it's twelve hundred dollars a year. So they can pay it out, which is not a problem. But it has turned into, we're a bill collecting organization now, and that is not good, because it spends, Tracy spends a ton of time trying to collect that. Well, on this, what I, what I'd like to see is put in here as number seven, the payment guidelines, simply stating that one half of the total due must be paid by the end of the first semester of the school year. Because we're getting to the end of the school year and we have some transfer families that still owe twelve hundred dollars. And here we are trying to collect that money. And that's not why we're doing this.
Well, they get it by next school year, and they still have to pay last year's.
We're, we're having to put a hold on student schedules because they ain't not paid the previous year, so we don't let them re-enroll until they pay. And you know, if they would just stick with the schedule, give them the option, paying it all up front, pay it by semester, pay it monthly, any of that works. But at least they need to be on schedule for a semester to pay half of it by the end of the half of the year.
So if they don't pay half by the end of that first semester, will we kick them out?
Failure is possible, yes. That's, that's the thing, failure to meet any of these on this list could end in termination of transfer status.
We ought to.
Well, for me, for, I didn't write this. I thought they should pay the first half when they sign up for school.
You sign up before.
And they pay the second half.
By January first, should be done with.
Because my deal is that, let's say they don't pay you the second half of the money, what are you going to do?
But they don't get to re-enroll.
But so what?
If they're still, now they're done.
It still has cost us district money. They went to school for free. And so.
This is more to favor.
I think, honestly, I would like to see us change it, paying the first half up front and the second half at the, at the midterm. I mean, you're, you're paying it, just like going to college.
Pay in advance.
Yeah, you're paying it, I mean, you pay for the next semester before you.
Well, that eliminates the monthly payment plan, though. That's, the, the fact that we let them do it monthly allows them to be able to pay it out, if we do what you're saying.
Well.
That eliminates. But I'm not arguing the point, I'm just, that's what it does, it eliminates the monthly payment plan for people.
So what are you going to do when they all pay the last?
They don't re-enroll next year.
Hey, but you still didn't get paid those four months and you spent.
We're talking a couple hundred bucks out of a ten million.
That's not a lot of money to give a.
I understand it. I know what you're saying, I don't disagree with you.
Well, then let's do something. So what's your feeling, Tracy?
Well, I mean, there are families that coming up with that amount of money all at once is difficult for them. But, you know, I have certainly seen districts do it exactly the way you're talking about, which is fine. I think we've been, we certainly have been lenient on it, and it's in turn causing some headaches.
We're spending more money because of something.
Yeah. And we need to tighten up on it. As far as if, if you guys are wanting to want it all up front each semester, then that's something we, we can put in the policy here and go with that. So I, you know, either way, like I say, there are families that it's going to be tough for them to come up with that one, that chunk of money all at one time. But if they plan ahead, it could be done.
If we, if we put it in place as of the next school year, starting September first, all, first semester of the 2018-19 school year must be paid prior to September first of the 2018 school year. Next semester has to be paid by the beginning of the semester, the second semester of that school year. If you put that in place now, that gives them six months.
Correct.
To figure it out.
I get some, I mean, I'm saying this out loud.
When you do have, when you do, like, a lot of times they know, like, I'm talking about new people that, you know, they're trying to get in and they have not even been approved yet or anything. You give them plenty of time when they do get approved that they could come up with the money. See, I think about those families.
Some of them don't know till week one, school starts.
That's what I was thinking, and those families then wouldn't have that time.
That you don't want to transfer to a different school district?
No, that there will be a.
That they're going to be approved to be into our.
They've been trying to get out of a different school, trying to get into Sabine or Kilgore or you.
So you start thinking about that, no need to be saving money.
But Kilgore doesn't charge.
Here's my, and I probably forever get in trouble saying this out loud, but people, parents I hear the most complaints from are the parents, or it's not all of them, but there are several of them, have transfer students here. And that really confuses me, because I'm like, if you're really that upset with our school district, why are we?
You choose to be here.
I totally agree. One other percent.
Because you have another choice that won't cost you a dime.
But it can be, it can be either way, you know.
I mean, I, number one, I hate to see y'all in the business of taking any of your time to collect money.
Yeah, that's, it's turned into, it's too many times.
Because we have spent any of our time.
Yeah, we, we.
That's even more money we're spending on that process.
Well, it is, because we are sending two letters out first semester, and then usually the second semester, we're sending three letters out.
Shouldn't even have to ask for the money.
So I have seen it both ways. So, you know, of this way right here, I'm just trying to kind of ease into it for, for some parents, but, you know.
Yes, sir. I agree with kind of you particularly, Mr. Franklin, and Tony, you kind of came up with it. We shouldn't be in the collection business. And you almost encourage that kind of behavior if you don't crack down. There's someone, if I heard you correctly, that is already now almost into April and hasn't paid a dime. That's not right.
No, it's not.
And their buddy's going to be asking to come in next week, a year or two. So just, that's just not right. You can accomplish, I think you should, number one, prepaid, either by semester, you can even say prepaid monkey, but then we're back into, oh, I'm tight this month.
That'd be tough, dude.
That'd be tough, but certainly prepaid by semester. Like Tony used, or Mr. Raymond you said, you know, when you start the year, you've got to come up with a half, with the semester, second half. And then under six, the board reserves the right to address any extraordinary circumstances not addressed in this policy and/or waive any of the requirements in the policy on an individual basis. So there's still that opportunity for some.
There is some flexibility of this.
That needs some help. It's in there. But otherwise, everyone else, come out, prepaid per semester, write this up and bring it back to us. And I agree with Mr. Raymond that, you know, implement it for the twenty, or the September of 2018.
Okay, you definitely need to do it that way, you know, ahead of time to give everybody the notice. And I know, you know, like Ms. Bates is saying, well, what about those new ones? I mean, that's exactly right. They will not, those kindergarten kids or first grade for their first time being accepted or eighth grade, doesn't matter. Normally, they're going to find out, they're not going to find out until August. TEA doesn't open their website up to us until July to, to send this information to them. So it will be August when they find out, but, you know, that's.
Let's get set up for credit cards.
Look at us, a square accountant, it's one for card card good.
But, I'm serious about it.
You know, like you say, they know when they apply, that it's a possibility. So they ought to be planning for.
And if you charge a service fee like the post office does, if you're going to use a credit card, so it's not like you're losing that two percent. And I am going to say this, out of compassion, I mean, certainly, like I said, this table gives away a lot of money. And so if you have to do it, it doesn't need to be somewhere else for some special circumstance, I think you can come to the board and we may find other ways to go ahead and still pay them.
You may find scholarship money.
We may find scholarship to go ahead and pay it upfront, if they're truly in that needy situation.
As opposed to Tracy chasing them down after the fact.
And they need to be here, so.
Yeah, one, one thing you, you just want to be, no, no, I have to say, you want to be very, very careful of, is you do not want transfers, I mean, transfer procedures in here in y'all's lap.
No.
You don't want that.
Nope.
That, that is by far one of the not fun parts of this job. Because now it's to a point where even though we're, we're trying to benefit the school district and the students to allow them to come in, when they're told no, and more are told no than yes, man, it's turned into, they think that's their right to be here, you know? And it's not that way.
By your house.
I mean, all of them, I mean, all of them, but that's the way it's turned into more and more and more. Because just get ready, that second week of August is when we get blasted, because that's when the letters go out, yes, you're accepted, or no, you're not, you know. And, you know, it's my fault when they're not. And, and I'm okay with that. I'm just saying, that's something you have in policy that you don't have to deal with.
It's not board function.
Rather it that way.
I love telling people that.
Nothing to do with it, because.
Start calling y'all.
I like that to call anyway.
I get to call anyway.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I got to call, like, to tell them, nothing to do with it.
I don't know, if you're still running this school, if you're okay with moving it to pay it up front, I'm going to.
I mean, I'm definitely okay with that. I mean, I don't have a problem with that at all.
As long as you think it's wise and not otherwise.
No, no, that is, I mean, that will take us completely out of the collection agency business and just deal with school. And either they will pay or they don't, and that's, that's that.
I bet Tracy will vote for it.
Oh, no doubt. Okay, then on the payment guidelines. I'll put it to you in advance. Worded tonight so we can move on.
What it'll do must be paid prior to each semester.
Prior to each semester. Prior to each semester.
Pictures, we'll put back in.
All right, to each semester, strike it out by the end of the first.
Yes, get us ready. Well, I mean, you could play with number seven, or you could forget about number seven, go back up to number one. Tuition may be, or shall be, shall be prepaid.
Yes.
You're saying eliminate seven, modify one?
Yes.
Okay.
Tuition shall be prepaid annually, strike monthly, or by semester, or by each semester. But prepaid, key words prepaid and shall, so tuition shall be prepaid annually or by each semester.
In advance.
Hmm?
In advance.
Prepaid, yeah.
Oh, you were prepaid, yes, prepaid, and then we go left. I missed the prepaid.
And, and then just don't even bother with number seven.
Prepaid annually or by semester?
Annually comma, or by each semester.
Be written in, and clues are in there.
There's no reason to add a number seven, it's already worded.
We love the more likely.
We're okay with this one, it doesn't bother me at all.
Okay, number eight now. We need to strike that, because if they prepaid, this is not.
Well, you may midsemester, they may come in and not pay the next second semester.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so that was, that was covered, but I can't pay, sorry, so I should tell you on that. I came in here, I came in here to talk to you about that recommend, and I said, why don't you just pull it in right now? If you wanna pay, you don't know.
We had that conversation. Where the recommend come from?
Because that's what I got with Tracy on this one, I said, no, that's not what we need, so.
It'd be a suggestion, if you feel like it.
Yes, yeah.
If you'd like. All right, so we're all good on the wording of number one, to prepaid annually or each semester?
Sure you're good with that?
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm really good, I definitely wanted to tighten it up, and this, this would tighten it up totally, so that's good.
And strike the word may and replace it with shall.
Exactly, exactly.
How many things did I run?
I made that motion.
It's a normal, do we need to send a heads up letter?
Oh, yeah, we'll send a letter.
That's what I'm asking, no.
We'll send a letter out on the changes to every parent that has a transfer student here, and we'll have to put it out on the website and everything else, or any new ones in our little.
Just to give them the heads up, that they need to make, because it's, it will impact several people, and they just need the heads up, well in advance, start planning for that five months. Yeah, that's, they've got plenty of time to do something, if it's, if they're serious about it, they wanna be here, then you got several months, several months figured out.
Okay, so basically on number one, how it's gonna be worded is tuition shall be prepaid annually or by each semester. And that would take care of that part of it.
So we're taking seven out.
You'll need seven.
Yeah, that was just.
And renumbering it.
And then we don't have an air, or we don't have a die anymore. Is that the official, or you?
It didn't matter, Stacy's.
Okay.
Okay, so that would be my recommendation, change number one to read tuition shall be prepaid annually or by each semester.
Okay, you have a motion?
Yeah, I have a motion.
Dr. Morchat, you have a second? Paul, any discussion? In favor? unanimous? All right, on to the next one.
Okay, seven D, instructional materials allotment and antique certification, y'all, as y'all know, that's a routine item that, for some reason, the state has to have that. Basically, that is saying that all of the materials, books that we will be spending EMAT money on, does include the teaks, as the state puts it out. So that's basically a notice saying that all our materials are covered, or do cover the teaks, and board has a certified that saying that.
So just, recommendation?
Is to approve the instructional material allotment and antique certification.
You have a motion? Patty, second, but Paul, any discussion? All in favor? unanimous?
C, okay, the, the next thing is the advisory committee, that's another housekeeping item that Region Seven has to have on file, of the school board across the states, who are giving the okay to list a superintendent as the agent that deals with Region Seven on all the contracts and things like that that we do each year. And that became new a few years ago, but that's an annual item we have to revisit each year. So it would be my recommendation to approve is the contact person for Region Seven.
Okay, you have a motion? Paul, the second, but Patty, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, unanimous? D.
And, Andre, I said contact person, I mean, I, it probably needs to be worded, placed on the advisory committee for certification, as it says on.
Okay.
Okay, and the last thing on the action item is the update, and if you will recall, the last policy update that we had was 856 pages long, and that was update 109. Update 110 is extremely short. If you will look at the, the text that was at your place, that makes it much simpler to look at, you got the vantage points, and you saw that there was only one local policy that had any change whatsoever. And this handout explains it even further, where you can look at it, where the red text in, no, the deletions, the additions are in blue, and if it's moved, it's in green. So if you will turn that page and look at the second page, that is the entire update as far as we're concerned on policy changes, because the rest of it is legal, and we have nothing to do with legal that happens, so we have no choice in that. But in other words, if you look at that, this, of course, is, was designed for our school district, it talks about membership, the board shall consist of seven board members, they just didn't name that in the previous policies. And then the board members shall be elected by place, and will be done in November, they changed wording on board members shall be elected for year terms with elections conducted by annually as follows, and it lists the places. Now, look at that to make sure we're on the same lines, as far as places three, four, and five are up at our 2018 election, 2022 election, 2026 election, and then places one, two, six, and seven are up in 2020, 2024, and 2028. And, you know, talks about the method of voting, basically, you need to get one more vote than the other person, so. All of you know all that, it's just some of the changes in wording that they put in the local policy. And that is the only policy change in update 110, so that was pretty simple. Any questions regarding those minor changes to that policy? As policy B B B local.
Right, so, recommendation?
Recommendation is to approve local policy changes as presented.
You have a motion?
I move that the board add, revise, or delete local policies as recommended by Tasby Policy Service and according to the instruction sheet for Tasby Localized Policy Manual update 110.
Look at that. And that is good.
Yeah.
It's, it's written.
Can I get a second?
Thank you.
Paul. Need discussion?
Strike the pause. All in favor? unanimous? All right, and that will move us.
Going against, because they're running. We are going to close session at 7:30.